Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Committee of the Whole, April 16, 2018. We've acknowledged that the land on which we gather is the traditional territory of the coast and strait Salish peoples. Specifically, we recognize the Lakwangan-speaking people, known today as the Songhees and Isqyamalt nations, and that their historic connections to these lands continue to this day. I'm Councillor Tarrane, and I'll be chairing the meeting this evening. And I'll formally call the meeting to order now. Thanks, everybody, for attending. And just a small note, if any of you wish to speak to any of the items on the agenda this evening, I'd ask that, in order to hear from as many people as possible, that you keep your comments brief where possible. Again, a reminder that these proceedings are live on our website and video archived. So, we'll move right into the agenda here with item one. And this evening, we have a presentation, the U bicycle operations in Oak Bay. And we have with us this evening representatives from the U bicycle to present to the council. So I'll invite you to come to the table and commence your presentation. You can introduce yourself. Yeah, push the button, that's it?
Hello, hello.
Okay.
Hi, everyone, councillors and Oak Bay citizens. My name's Elliot Raymer. I'm the Community Outreach Specialist for U bicycle. And with me this evening are Raviv, who's the city manager, and Giancarlo, who is the product manager. So, the U bicycle plan for Oak Bay. Who we are, U bicycle is one of the world's leading bike-share platforms. And what we do is dockless bike-sharing. So, instead of having to take the bikes to specific docks, the users can park them anywhere they'd like. And this is very convenient for users, because they can go from wherever they are to wherever they wish to go. So this is the first model of bicycle that we introduced in October in Victoria. The bikes were designed with anti-theft measures. They're designed to be very comfortable. They have the step-over frame, so they can be ridden by people of varying athletic abilities. They're very safe. The tires cannot be punctured, because they're made of foam instead of filled with air. And they have a front basket that can hold up to five kilograms, so very handy for shopping and doing errands. We've had a lot of success in Victoria over the last half a year. More than 7,000 downloads. Every month, we get quite a few more users, especially in March, over 100% increase. And we're seeing that continue into the warmer months, so that's very promising. And, yeah, we partner with the city by providing them with data on the bicycle usage, which is very useful, because before a bike-share platform exists, there isn't really a centralized way to obtain data. So, for making planning on infrastructure and things like this, it's incredibly valuable to cities to have this. And we work also with developers. We have solutions to drive traffic to their physical locations. We do a lot of work with incentivizing the users to park their bicycles in front of the developments and things such as this. Always looking to partnership with local businesses. This is just a partial list of the people that we work with, and it grows every day. People such as Tourism Victoria, Experienced Victoria, the Greater Victoria Harbour Authority. There's also a few others that aren't on there, some hotels, Patagonia. Just looking to forge these relationships with people, providing value to the clients. So here's a little map of where we're thinking we'd originally deploy them when we start in Oak Bay. Just the convenient commercial locations, such as right outside of this building, Estevan Village, the rec center, the marina. And that's where we'll start. But then, of course, the users can take them to wherever they find convenient, and then our operations team balances out the bikes and keeps them in good places. The red dot up there, you probably recognize, is being UVIC. And that is a key point for us, because we are talking to UVIC already. UVIC is very positive about the idea. And they simply do not want to continue until they have the green light from Oak Bay and Sanich. Sanich, incidentally, just began with us on April 9th, so we have bikes in Sanich now. And, yeah, we're hoping to have the bicycles available for the students of UVIC for September, when most of their transportation needs become strongly felt. So, yeah, we're looking at maybe sticking five bikes at the marina. These numbers are just arbitrary. And some more over there. Estevan Village and Willow's Beach, looking to be very popular destinations. So the next steps for us, we'd like to come up with a timeline with Oak Bay in order to figure out how we can best expedite the process, draft a standard regulatory agreement. There's a standard one, and the appendix is coming up for the, like internationally recognized by bike shares, and cities have done it many times before. And we'd like to be able to connect in time for the bike-share program in UVIC, if possible. We have liability coverage in place, up to $5 million for personal injury. And if you feel this needs to be increased, we could do that as well. Parking management, Sanich has introduced a specific bylaw to allow us to park on sidewalks. So if that is also felt needed, we can definitely do that. These are all just there. Yeah, so just looking forward to those next steps. Having a point-of-contact person whom we can communicate with on this, and really excited to move forward and offer this to the Oak Bay citizens.
Good. Thank you very much, Mr. Raymer. So the committee has a staff report before them, and why don't we open this up? If committee members have any questions to Mr. Raymer? Councillor Kirby?
Thank you. Thanks for the presentation. That's very exciting to the, so do you share the data that you accumulate over time with the municipality about most-used routes or most-popular areas to visit?
Could you let us know who you are, please?
Hi. So my name's Raviv Litman. I'm the operations manager for Victoria. So I've been working with this program since it started in September. And what we've done with the city of Victoria, which would be the example to draw from, is we've shared data on where the trips are, on frequency of trips, and growth patterns. Also, how factors like weather, time of day, and seasonal changes have affected trips. So all data related to bicycle use and locations.
That's wonderful. We could use that. That's excellent news. Okay, thank you. And one other question, I just, my understanding is I've seen the bikes on my ride to work on Haltein. And they, so is the understanding that you gather them up and move them back to the locations where they, where the, were initially deployed? Or do you reassess at some point if those locations aren't being used? And find another locale? Or how do you maintain, like, I've seen a lot of them just sort of on the sidewalk, on the Haltein bike corridor. I'm just wondering if that's a designated location? Or does that just people end up leaving them there frequently, because it's on the bike corridor?
So we continually reassess what we call the hotspots, places where the bikes should be rebalanced to. So that Haltein Corners area is one of the places where we often return the bikes. But that's always, we're constantly looking at whether they're getting a lot of use there. Some places we thought would be very popular, and then they weren't, so the bikes got rebalanced elsewhere. And generally, we, if they're left in one spot, a specific bike, for about a week, then we figure that's not the best place.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Braithwaite?
Thank you, through you, Chair. Thanks so much for the presentation. It's pretty exciting. I work downtown, so I see the bikes everywhere downtown. I do have a couple of questions though. So you did touch upon that the usage went up in March, which leads me to believe that in November to February, the bikes are not used. So they, do they just stay wherever they are for those months? Or do you collect them and take them and store them somewhere and then bring them back in March?
Well, they are still used over the winter, just predictably, probably at a lower rate. But also, in the next winter, we're hoping that, since people now have the app, are now used to it as part of their infrastructure, there will be more use in the following winter than we had this one.
Right, okay. And then, so how many bikes do you have in the city of Victoria right now?
Four fifty.
Four hundred and fifty?
Yep.
And then, is there a cost? Like, what cost has been incurred to the city of Victoria because of those bikes?
Just to clarify, do you mean cost to run the system?
No. I mean, what costs have come up that perhaps weren't thought of because of a bike being, you know, tied to a parking meter or something, and they have to come and cut it off, or whatever? So something like that. So not costs for the actual bikes, but costs that would have to go back to the municipality.
Right. So with the city of Victoria, and now with the city of Sanich, we have an agreement that if such a situation would occur, we have a fund where they could draw to reimburse those damages. However, we haven't had that situation occur yet.
So they haven't, nobody's ever had to, okay. So that's good. And then, if I might, my next question was, as you've probably noticed, in Oak Bay, we have very skinny sidewalks. So can you maybe talk a little bit about that, about the effect of, because these bikes you can leave, wherever you step off them, you can leave them, correct? So if one is left, for example, let's just say in front of the Penny Farthing, where the sidewalk is very, very skinny, or across the street is even skinnier, how then do you, how then do we deal with something like that? Or is it left up to us to have to move that bike? Or does it sit there for a month until somebody else picks it up and rides it? Or how does that work?
So for high-density areas, so right now, our example would be downtown Victoria, we do rebalance those areas quite a bit more frequently. So that's part of our staff responsibility. It's not true that there are no rules in terms of parking. So the, there's a user agreement that people who join our system sign. And some of the regulations in that involve not blocking the right-of-way. So it's very similar to the way you park a private bicycle, where you could park it on the boulevard, at a bike rack, or somewhere that's against a pole or a tree. But you could not park it in front of the main thoroughfare of the sidewalk without getting a warning from our system.
And if I might just ask one more question. So a warning from the system, and so say I was a bad person, and I had three warnings, and then I'm out, I never get to, never get to rent the bikes again? Or is that how it works?
So the user agreement is also associated with a damage deposit, and if users continue to violate the user agreement, they could be fined.
That's all great information. Thank you.
Okay. Are there any further questions from the committee councillor Murdoch?
Thank you, and through your chair. So, yeah, it's pretty, it's a pretty exciting thing to be able to have this. Certainly nice to see some way of driving some bike utilization up. I have a question of staff, just from a procedural piece that I'm hoping they can answer. There are a number of bike rental places in Oak Bay, either directly in Oak Bay or adjacent. They have storefronts, they have licensing fees and stuff they have to pay. Is there any issue here with us having sort of a differentiated levels of requirement for different businesses, running similar businesses?
Through the chair. So this would be a change and be a new addition to the business license. It'd be a new form of a business license. And, you know, I think there are a few things that council might want to consider, like the applicants, or the folks here did, like, are there places where council may choose that there be no bikes? But the issue of the rentals, I think, is a fair question. And so we haven't contemplated, at this stage, doing any dialogue with the rentals. But that is certainly something council, if they wished, we could certainly have a dialogue with those businesses.
Well, I mean, I notice that one is at the marina, and they're doing bicycle rentals directly at that marina, so it would be sort of directly adjacent to putting bicycles right beside. So I think I'll put it to the applicants. Do you see conflict between the service that you're providing versus more traditional bike rental businesses?
Well, on one hand, they're somewhat non-competitive, in that it's a different service. But also, for someplace like the marina, we'd be more than happy to not have our bikes stationed there. And one of our tasks would be to remove them from there if users left them. And if things like this, within reason, we're more than happy to comply. Yeah. Or the Oak Bay Beach Hotel, I understand they have bike rentals as well? Or they don't? Oh. Well, similar businesses, we don't mind giving them some geography.
Okay, thank you very much. And I think there's probably some balance we can strike there. I just, that's just occurred to me that I'm sure if I was paying rent and tax and everything else, and property taxes and everything else, and you had somebody coming who didn't carry those. So I guess that's a question I would have for you. There is, Councillor Braithwaite mentioned, we have a lot of very narrow sidewalks, particularly in our village. It's actually quite congested and hard to get around, especially for those with mobility issues. We don't have a lot of bike racks, so, you know, having the bikes out of the way is often difficult. They do get leaned up against and in the way of people. Is there any contemplation of providing, actually adding to our stock of bike racks, so that we could actually put some more places to put some of these bikes? They're often full right now, so adding 35 more bikes into the milieu might make it fairly difficult to actually find space.
We would be open to providing some bike racks, in that we're adding to the pool of bikes.
I would add that that's part of our agreement with the city of Victoria, that if it should be found that the bikes create additional pressure on certain areas, that we can, along with the city, together fund bike racks for those areas.
And I do notice that in the maps, the starting/stopping, they almost all start in the center and spread out in the distribution, which is normal. And certainly, we see quite a few in Oak Bay, frankly, even now, just. And I spoke to some of the councillors in Victoria, and they said they get quite a few calls, not complaints, but certainly calls a query where people will say, "I've got a bike sitting in my front yard for a few days here, what do we do about this?" And it's not entirely clear in terms of the phone numbers to call or anything else with the bike. So is there, what is the model for that? For just dealing with people who call and say, "We've got a bike sitting here for a while"?
Yeah, so the city, when they do get those calls, direct those calls, either through email or phone calls to us. But what we're working towards is a sticker that would go on the bike. So we haven't got that yet, but we have them printed out, and we're going to add those to our existing fleet that would have a phone number and email on it. And that would help communicate directly to the public.
And the last two questions just relate to just sort of the quality of service. If we're going to have these, there's a reflection on the community as well, that the quality of service is high. I note in the app that it's fairly low-rated. It's a 3.2-star app, for all kinds of reasons. That sometimes it just doesn't work, so they're frustrated with it not working. I also, there's a number of complaints that if you put the deposit, like you come to town, you visit, and you leave again, you don't get your deposit back, the $50 deposit. So have those things been addressed? And are they being addressed in some way, shape, or form?
Just to clarify, the damage deposit can be refunded. It's the credits that people put on, that they've had trouble getting refunds on. To deal with that, we are introducing a day rate, or actually, a number of different payment plans, so people could come and use the bikes for one day without having to pay for a base amount.
So can you just explain to us how, so the normal course of action would be to pay a set amount, and then you would just draw down on that amount as you use it?
That's right. So there would be a $10 top-up, and then that would draw down until it got to zero.
Thank you. And any comments on the app complaints themselves? Is that something that's being addressed?
Yeah, so a lot of those complaints are from initially after our launch, when we did have some technical problems. The complaints are usually with the app itself, which did have some problems that we are working to address on the technical side. I think that many reviews is not really a representative sample of all the people who are using the app, but it is something we are working on improving.
Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate that very much. And I do think it's worthwhile for us to increase the amount of places and ways of parking the bikes. I think that would be very helpful for us as a municipality.
Thank you. Councillor Zelka?
Thank you very much, Chair. A question through you to the applicants. A very interesting idea. I'm definitely looking forward to seeing innovative ideas come to Oak Bay and anything to possibly with the tourists or the students, or anything to make Oak Bay definitely more walkable, more ridable, more accessible. I do have a couple of concerns with the private company use, commercial use of public space. And trying to balance those two, you know, your desires versus the needs of the public. I just, I'm wondering, one scenario, I just want to sort of throw it there, if there were a couple of bicycles that were sort of just all over the sidewalk, and someone in a wheelchair couldn't get through, what might they do? Would you expect them to call Oak Bay? Or would you expect them to go onto the road? Or what? I just, I don't want to throw that, start with that scenario. What would you expect something like that to happen? Because I imagine that with our very narrow streets and sidewalks, that possibly could occur.
Well, it is possible. However, what we've seen in Victoria is that people are actually very conscientious with how they park the bicycles. Even if one of the bicycles has gotten knocked over by the wind, people go and put it back up. So while it is possible, the overwhelming trend is for people to be quite responsible. And another thing is, that we've noticed, is when they see bikes parked in a group, they'll park their bikes there as well. So trends develop in the direction away from bikes being in the sidewalk, towards bikes being in more convenient places.
Could you state your name again?
Yeah. My name is Giancarlo, and I'm a project manager as well on U bicycle. So regarding as well, we have intercommits and a platform, a platform, sorry, that we answer our customers. So we have people working customer service at all time. So any complaint that we get, we actually immediately try to answer them back. And in this case, if by any chance we have bicycles, then any user will contact us, and we immediately will try to ensure that we can move the bicycles to our team.
That's very helpful. If I may continue, Chair, a couple more questions. The system, does it rely on Wi-Fi or data networks? And if it is data networks, is this tellis, Bell, Rogers?
It can be Wi-Fi or data networks. So any way that the user has internet on their phone will work.
And the bicycles themselves?
How do you mean?
Well, the bicycles, I see they have GPS, but they, but at some point, a signal has to get to the bike to unlock it.
They communicate through Bluetooth.
Bluetooth, from your device, I presume? So the actual person's cellphone would then get onto some sort of a network, and then from that, from the person's Bluetooth, assuming it was on, it would get to the phone, sorry, to the bike.
Yes, and the app tells you to turn the Bluetooth on if it's not.
Okay. The reason I ask that is that in a couple of places in Oak Bay, I happen to be in the north part of Oak Bay, Henderson area, we have a number of dead zones. It's a pain in the butt. I can't make a phone call in the back of the house, but I can make a phone call in the front of the house, for example, where I happen to live. And I'm sure it's getting better and better, but it sounds like you are relying on, I guess, Shaw Wi-Fi and the tellis, tellis-free Wi-Fi, and those sort of free internet for the users who don't have data plans.
Yes, yes. So there, in the dead zones, it might be a little less convenient. You could still unlock the bicycle if you found it, but you wouldn't have the internet, so you wouldn't be able to look at an updated version of the map and find the bicycle.
Okay. Well, this is very helpful, just to hear some of the ideas on how you sort of essentially laid out the operationalizing, which draws out, I guess, really, your business model. I presume it is a private company that's profit-oriented?
Yes.
Are there any funds that are from various granting agencies that are supporting this? I just don't want to know, because it does reflect, to some extent, on Oak Bay, in terms of this use of the public space. What assurance do we have that you'll be here next year, 10 years, 20 years from now?
So we have funding from, it comes mostly from venture capitalists and from corporations who are backing this trend in other countries. It's international funding, although the company itself is based in Vancouver. And in terms of assurances, we look at it in terms of a one-year pilot project to start, and then we see if it is profitable, and we continue from there. So we're not looking for, you know, a 10-year plan right now. We're looking at the viability of the system, and that's why we start with what we consider a modest amount of bicycles, and then we see if that's viable.
Wonderful. Very appropriate. And if I was, for the companies that I've started up, taking out like a one-year pilot approach, I think is very appropriate. From our perspective, this sounds like it might be a very useful approach to use a tool that we have in the legislation called a temporary use permit, where we have a chance to potentially be innovative and provide a temporary access to a different, a change of land use. But it also allows us to attach conditions to it. And if after a year we don't like it, we can yank the permit. Island Trust and a number of other municipalities have taken advantage of some of these legislative tools to allow them to be innovative and try things out. And just because, you know, until we try it, we won't really know. I just wanted to direct a question to staff. Has anyone looked at the temporary use permit approach?
Through the chair. So the proponents have been very open about doing this kind of on a pilot or a trial basis to see how it works. What the exact mechanism for that, whether it's a temporary use permit or some other mechanism, we would come up with something. You know, there are things that the proponents and staff have, you know, you need to talk about. Are there places that you don't want bicycles to be left? So maybe it is the Oak Bay Marina. Are there, you know, are, after a year, have we incurred any costs ourselves? You know, have the police or staff been required to do anything to move bikes, that kind of thing? And so, you know, what staff intend on doing is coming back to council. We need to make an amendment to our street and traffic's bylaw. And in that, we will identify, after consultation with the police and engineering, what kind of conditions we might want to place on the business license. And again, the proponent has been very open to following or considering those ideas.
Fantastic. If I may, Chair, to continue. I'm very, as I say, very intrigued with this innovative approach. If I understand correctly, to be fair to all businesses, we can't really change many of the conditions of the business license after the fact. Whereas in this case, we may want to, a year later, two years later, modify provisions of the business license. Is this part of maybe some innovative approach to licensing that you'll be bringing forward?
Through the chair. I think you've seen that in some examples, in Victoria, for example. They've actually got, I'm not sure what it's been called, a memorandum of understanding or something like that. But the idea is, is to get this out and moving, and then see if there's a need for modifications in the future. But we would certainly build something like that in, especially if it's a pilot project, right? We would come back to council and say, "Here's what's happened over the year, and is it working well for people or not? And if it's not, then we can make some modifications, or council could choose to go some other direction."
Yeah, very intriguing with what, very intrigued with what staff would come forward on this. So if there are certain businesses, existing businesses in Oak Bay, or others who wish to start up a bike rental component, it would be great to see what ever-
We would come back to council and say, here's what's happened over the, the year. And is it working well for people or not? And if it's not, then we can make some modifications or council could choose to go some other direction.
Yeah, very, very, very intriguing with, with, with what, very intrigued with what staff would come forward on this. So if there are certain businesses, existing businesses in Oak Bay or others who wish to start up a bike rental components, it would be great to see whatever mechanisms that staff is thinking of, maybe in concert with, with the proponents in terms of how a forum or some sort of advisory committee or some, some kind of an approach that that can be taken so that everyone has a voice, not only now, but also a year from now and into the future.
So through the chair, you know, once we established a, a business for this type of use, any person or company would be entitled to engage in that same activity. So if there were other, and I think that's something important for council to consider. So there, the, the proponents realize that they don't get exclusive entitlement to this, this use in, in Oak Bay. It would be open to everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselors Zelka. Okay, so I don't know who said for, but I can see all three of you want to ask a question. So we'll start with Counsel, or Croft, okay?
Yeah, through you, Chair. I just have a couple of questions. Right now, you're in, in the city of Victoria. You've got approved for Sanich. Were you a third municipality and, and you're planning to expand the program further beyond those boundaries? Where's, where, where are you planning to go next?
So we are currently in discussion with the Squamult, Langford and Colwood. That's within the Greater Victoria. The company is also working in other parts of Canada as well. So areas in the lower mainland and Alberta are also at various points of discussion.
Another question through you, Chair, is how many employees do you have locally with a number of bikes as you go down the road? Are you able to manage the fleet the way you've described to us?
So within Victoria, we have four employees, soon to be five. And then we have a executive team in Vancouver who is managing the, the customer service and the development sides of the company.
Now, who was first here out of you two? Okay, Counsel, Counselor Murdock.
I guess just a quick, I, I think that, listening to the, the, the discussion here, I feel pretty comfortable. I mean, I think we want to support the innovation. You know, it's one of these things we're not going to get it all right to start with, so we need to try something. I think what we need to sort of lay out, understanding, not, not here tonight, but just as general, like, let's figure out what it is that we want and that there's, what the recourse is are. So if there's problems that we have some recourse either to cancel the license or to make changes on your side, but have a friendly for the feedback loop. And the wording I'm looking at here to, to, the council direct staff to draft amendments is sufficiently clear or vague, I guess, to, to let you guys do the right thing amongst that. So I, I don't, I feel like at this point, it feels pretty comfortable to me to move it forward. I'll move the motion there.
I am going to ask, I'm going to ask, I'm going to go to the community as well, okay? So if you could hold off on that, okay, thank you. Counselor Braithwaite.
Thanks so much, Chair. There's a couple of things that I've heard that just kind of raised my concern a little bit. Because I do agree that this is a, a great idea and I would love to see something like this come to Oak Bay. So two things. Counselor Murdock touched on one of them, which was the business license. And do they, they have to have a business license to operate in Oak Bay?
Yes.
And so how does that compare, because they don't have a storefront, to the cost of a business license for any other businesses? Is it the same?
Each category has different charges, but yeah, essentially it would be the same as a, we'd have to come up with the fee.
Okay. And then something that you said, Mr. Jones, is that other businesses could come along tomorrow, the next day, the next day, with exactly the same sort of a business. And then how do we then, if you guys want to have 39 or 40 bikes on our streets, and if the next business wants to have 40, and the next business wants to have 40, and the next business wants to have 40, where, how does, how do we deal with something like that?
Through the chair, I, I guess at this stage, like most businesses, the market would dictate. And if it got to a point that there were concerns for council, then we could take some of their action. But there would be a, a market for a number of bikes and going beyond that, it would become unprofitable. So we, we would, we would let the market at this stage.
Yeah, I, I guess that's not, I, I guess where my concern would be is the number of bikes that we would have on there. Even if one other business came in and added another 40 bikes onto our streets, that to me could be a bit of a concern for what we would have to navigate through or what our residents would have to navigate through. So just something I think we need to think about a little bit.
If I could add on to that, there is examples of that in other cities where many bike share companies going into one city has created problems with over competition. So more bikes than there are customers. So there are some benefits to setting limits on the number of companies, we believe. Cities like Washington DC and Dallas, Texas gave out open license to any number of companies and ended up with thousands or tens of thousands of bicycles. This, of course, is not what Oak Bay would face probably. But other cities like Seattle took the option of limiting the total number of bicycles and then allowing companies to apply under a very stringent license for that number. So from our company's perspective, we do see there to be advantages to limiting the number of companies of scale. I think Oak Bay is a place that could only accommodate so many bicycles. So there may be advantages to exploring a upper limitation.
Okay, so with that, if there's no further questions from the committee, I'm going to go to the floor and invite anybody from the community to speak to the issue. So gentlemen, maybe I could just ask you to at least leave one of the chairs open for members of the community. And you know the drill, Mr. Sultan, to write your name in.
James Sultanum, South Oak Bay. I have a question and one comment.
Excuse me, Mr. Sultan. Can you just write that down on the?
I will.
Okay, thank you.
First question. First of all, I think the idea is fantastic. My first question is, what happens with, if the bike is left in hidden places and if it's tied up to trees? Is it able to, how will the group track bicycles in hidden places?
You can both sit there, I think. You're fine. It's okay.
So we can see the location of all of our bikes using GPS. So if a bike is in a place that's hidden to the eye, it's not hidden to us. And we'll see if it's in a location for too long or in a location that's simply unfit. And then we'll go move it to a better place.
Excuse me, sir. I'm sorry. Thank you. Just come on up to the mics because it's being videoed. And if you don't speak in the mic, then the video can't hear. Thank you.
Yeah, sometimes even other users or people who is crossing nearby the street, they see the bicycle, they will report to us. So they have the ability to do it through email or they will write us on social media. And we will get know about the notification and we will send the team to the specific location. So we have a track of ours.
I guess I meant, we have, I'm working with the worst-case scenario. For example, we have parks, okay? If someone happens to, to leave a bicycle in one of the parks, abandon the bicycle, like people do with boats, okay? So what happens?
We, we, we send our team to, to look for the bicycle. We have, we have track of all the bicycles and where we deploy them. So we could see where the bicycle is located. In our app, you could see, when you open it, you have the map and it shows you where the bicycles are. So if it's, if it's like inside in Lake Apple Park, we will go to see if it's in a proper way to put, yeah.
Thank you. Like the deer. Okay, my, my other comment. I'm a little bit worried about, not only about the number of bicycles, but I'd like to remind that, was it last year, I guess, first of all, the Marina, the lease will be renewed soon, okay? And last year, Turkey had the Marina, we had a rezony slash change of use and we allowed bicycle. How does the change of use, allowing bicycle relates to this? Are we going to have the Marina complaining, knocking on our door?
So is that a question to staff, I presume? Is that, so I'll ask Mr. Jones to speak to that. Thank you.
You know what? That's, that's a very valid question. I think the, the proponents earlier on suggested if there's places that they, or council felt that there shouldn't be bicycles, then that might be something we could work with them on. So I think that's a really good point. The Marina is renting bikes. The Oak Bay Beach Motel, Hotel, Motel, sorry, Hotel is, is renting bikes. So, you know, there, there's probably some, some discussion that needs to be had with the proponents around what's the best way to accommodate all.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sultan. So is there anybody else from the, in the audience there who'd like to speak to this issue? Okay, I'm going to take that as a no. So let's come back to the committee. Is there any further discussion, comments, questions? Counselor Croft.
To you, Chair. The Oak Bay Beach Hotel no longer has bikes for rent. They discovered that it wasn't being used that well. And we've got to remember that the Marina has, we're providing space for bikes, but that's being provided through a private contractor. It's not the Marina providing those bikes directly.
Croft, now I don't know who was first there.
I just want to move the recommendation.
Okay, hang, oh, sorry. Okay, well, I think, Murdock. It's been moved in. So we can move on. Counselors Zelka, you had a comment.
Yes, a question through staff involving the Director of Engineering. Can we, because our, I've noticed many of our bike racks are full or near full, especially in peak times. And, and if all goes well in this innovative idea, the usage of bikeage, the bike usage will increase. So can we impose engineering requirements, since I presume new bike racks built by the proponent will be in the public space? It won't necessarily be on private lands unless, unless they make arrangements under themselves. So can we impose engineering requirements on these new bike racks that would be built in the public space?
Through the chair, that's something, that's a conversation we could clearly have with the, the proponents. There, you know, normally what happens in those types of instances is that, that amenity would be donated to the community and we would take over that and maintain it in the future. But if that's something, again, we, we need to have a dialogue amongst staff. This, the, the idea today was to get a, an initial, how is the, the council feeling about this? And my, my takeaway is that there's interest in doing more and talking more about it. And we'll come back after discuss, discussions amongst staff and with the proponent with a, a little bit of a, a package based on the information that we've heard tonight.
Wonderful. And I'm, I'm all for community amenities. I appreciate the comments from staff. And in the same way that when a developer is donating an intersection as a community amenity as a result of a development next door, next to this intersection that needs work, no doubt there's engineering requirements that are imposed. In the same way, if we're going to be taking ownership of a piece of real property from a, a proponent, I would assume we would have some input on the engineering standards.
Through the chair, any, anything that we would take on, doesn't matter what it is, we would require that the standards of the municipality and building code be met.
Okay, Counselor Kirby and then Counselor Braithwaite.
Thank you, Chair. I just want to express my excitement and support, wholehearted support for this project. I think this is a wonderful addition to our community and I think the university students will welcome this wholeheartedly as well as an alternative to waiting for the bus, because that's why I started to ride my bike, was because I couldn't stand waiting for the bus. Now they're finally coming up with the app where you can know when the bus is going to arrive. But, you know, that, that's, and also the, the same issue of overcrowding on our buses has occurred for the students going to Vic. So this will help alleviate some of that pressure. So I think that's a great addition to the community and I look forward to seeing this come back to council for final approval.
Counselor Braithwaite.
Thanks. Just through you, Chair. I was glad to hear Mr. Jones say that they will be going to the staff and, and having a discussion with the staff. And particularly, I'd be interested to hear what the Oak Bay Police might have to say and whether or not they would actually be going to the Vic PD to ask their opinion on how this program has, has been in, in Victoria, because I think they might have some, some good information. So, so thank you for that.
Okay, is that a, Counselor Zelka?
Yes, thank you, Chair. I'm, so if one more question has come up. It might be for staff, it might be for the proponent. With respect to the business model, I'm sure being a, a private company that it needs to, to, to operationalize and monetize much of the data that's flowing through the system to some extent. So I can imagine there will probably be ads on the app that's being used, which is a private thing by, done by the users. But what I might worry about in the public space is ads on the bicycles, especially as they're roaming around Oak Bay. I, I could see that happening because that's, that might be part of the business plan. So I, I, the question, I guess, through you to the proponent, if I may, is, do you anticipate ads on the bicycles? And I guess a related question to staff is, can we have some say over the size of these ads? Thank you.
So to answer the first part of the question, yes. Although it is not currently being done, we are considering ads both on the app and on the bicycles themselves. There is some precedent that, with this in terms of legislation around PC transit's use of ad in their moving vehicles. We've talked about this with you, Vic, that for certain areas in certain municipalities, there may be some requirements around their existing regulations or agreements with companies or with the public regarding how to use ads. And we'll address these on a case-by-case basis. So if Oak Bay puts forward regulations on ads, we'll address that in that region.
So we have a motion on the table. And if there's no further discussion, I'm going to call the question. All in favor? Opposed? None opposed? Okay, thank you very much. Thank you very much for that. We, it's a rigorous questioning about that, but you can see there's a lot of excitement about your product as well. So thank you for coming this evening. So let's move on to the land use applications. We have a land use application here at 3380 Ripon Road. This is an architectural sighting and design application for the construction of a new single-family home. And if the committee determines this is ready to proceed, it will be included for consideration as part of the Committee of Home Minutes at the council meeting on April 23rd, 2018. So I'm going to ask staff to speak to the planning report first.
Thank you, Chair. As mentioned, this is an application for upland sighting and design to construct a new two-story, single-family home, which would replace the existing home on the site. The new home will be set further back on the site with the driveway moved further south to accommodate the new garage. The advisory design panel reviewed the application on April 3rd and were generally supportive of the proposed development. They did specifically address tree protection as part of the construction techniques and recommended improving window alignment, addressing vertical elements on the building and reducing paved surface area. All of those elements have been incorporated into the design that you have in front of you. Staff have also reviewed the application with respect to site characteristics and the neighborhood. Suggestions were made with respect to sighting of the home, particularly with respect to impacts on trees. And those were taken into account by the applicant before the current sighting was even brought forward to the design panel. The front yard of the property will be expanded to provide a more park-like setting. And the trees that are located near the building may be impacted, but the applicant can use special construction techniques to mitigate those impacts. So staff are requesting council direction.
Thank you very much, Ms. Jensen. So are there any questions from the committee to staff first? Counselor Murdock, I think.
Very quick question. The, the, the sighting looks good on it. I'm just curious, has been, was there assessment done in the review process of looking at the impact of sightlines for any neighboring houses? Because it'll be a little bit higher up on the lot.
Based on the, the fencing and the vegetation that's on site, it's unlikely it'll have much of an impact on neighbors. The applicant has indicated that they have spoken with all of their neighbors who are in support. The applicant has indicated that they have spoken with all of their neighbors who are in support.
Counselor Zelka.
Thank you so much, Chair. Note that the Advisory Design Panel, is it, yes, the Advisory Design Panel, suggested softening of the landscaping around the garage in particular. I do, I, my, I mean, I'm all for different designs and in this, I'm trying to remember, this is in Uplands, isn't it? Yeah, so in the Uplands, of course, we do encourage different designs. However, I do find the design very harsh. So I guess I understand the suggestion from the ADP to soften the landscaping. Was there any, in terms of some of the comments that came back or some of the design changes, was that incorporated in the landscaping, please?
Yeah, just to clarify, that comment was very specific to the landscaping around the garage itself and not to the rest of the development. And there were some changes that were made around that area to try and improve some of the vegetation.
Wonderful, thank you. Last question is having to do with the dark sky principles. I don't see that there was an acceptance of that request from the ADP to reduce landscape lighting with respect to the dark sky principles. There appears to be a trend amongst some of the new home builders, especially for these modern design styles, to splash light all over the house. And as has happened on some of the houses that went forward without dark sky principles applied. And I would, especially in the Uplands area, like to see dark sky principles applied maybe more rigorously. Is there any acceptance from the proponent to take on those comments, please?
I wouldn't necessarily want to speak on behalf of the proponent. They are here tonight if you would like to ask them that question. There was discussion at the design panel, pardon me, between the panel and the applicants with respect to reducing the lighting.
If I may, Chair, pass the question through to the proponent.
Well, if you hold off, yeah, okay, thank you. I'll just check if there's any other questions from the committee. Okay, so the applicant is here. I wonder if you'd like to come up to the table here and, okay. And just state your name on the sheet there and the municipality you're from.
Gary Bogdanovich, I'm a property owner.
My name is Pamela, you're being the architect for the project. To answer your question, yeah, yes, both in the design rationale and during the ADP review, we were, we were specific in that all lighting would adhere to dark sky principles. We have no interest in lighting up the house. There'll be downlighting in some of the soffits and the backyard will have downlighting, but we're not lighting up the house or any trees or anything like that.
Thank you so much, Chair, that takes care of my questions.
Any other questions from the committee to the applicant? Okay, so I'm going to ask if there's anybody in the audience, pardon me, who'd like to speak to this application? Looks like there is nobody here, so.
I would move the staff recommendation.
Second.
So we have a motion and a secondary, further discussion?
I just want to comment and that the, this is a 40,000 square foot lot, I think, or so. An acre. And the house is very reasonably sized, in my opinion, by comparison.
Very friendly, I would say.
Yes. And still respects the park-like setting goals of the Uplands. And we haven't seen that as very frequently in past years. A lot of the applications coming forward were always dramatically larger than what was there before. Or, and pushed the boundaries so that the 25% lot coverage was, like, it was always very close. And so I just want to commend you for keeping this at a more modest style, size.
That was the original intent.
And.
Understated.
Understated and.
Seventy-five hundred square feet. In that area.
But in that area, that is, that, shockingly, is, and the footprint itself is only not quite 3,000 square feet, I think, yeah. And I think that, I hope other people follow your example because that is a trend that I was, we were frustrated with and unable to correct without changing some bylaws and we couldn't get ahead of it. And so I'm really appreciative of that. And I just commend you for being respectful to the earth and, thanks. Thank you.
Okay, I just have one question to the applicant. I notice on the design that the patio you have, there's, I do appreciate the moves you've made to protect the trees. And of course, there's that one arbutus tree that could plunk right in the middle of your patio there. And I'm just wondering, given it's in the middle of the patio, is there, has there been any thought about any other way to save that? I was just wondering what the thought, the process was around. Yeah.
Lots of discussion.
Yeah, originally, I'll speak to this. Originally, our design, my, I should say, my design process was to try and dodge the trees as much as possible. It gave us quite a fragmented design and the client was more interested in a family-centric design where he could monitor his kids, whether he was in the kitchen looking out to the pool or they were in the rec room. And so that was really how we came up with this floor shape, which is quite traditional in its rectangular shape, but speaks to how people want to have that family-centric home. So we tried, but it is literally right in the middle and it's the only one we really couldn't dodge.
Okay, thank you, I just wanted to know that. Okay, so we've got a motion on the table. Is there any further discussion? Then I'm going to call the question. All in favor? Opposed, non-opposed? Thank you very much. Okay, so, thank you. So the next land use item. This is a form and character application as per the infill residential development permit area for a two-lot subdivision at 1605 York Place to build a new single-family residence on Lot B. And as usual, if the committee determines this is ready to proceed to council, we'll consider issuing the permit at the council meeting on April 23, 2018. So I'm going to turn to the planning staff for an overview of the application.
So council may recall that they recently adopted a zoning bylaw to facilitate a two-lot subdivision at this property. And as a result of that rezoning, the applicants must now obtain an infill residential development permit to consider the form and character of the new home. The applicants are proposing a two-story home that reflects the character of the neighborhood and incorporates elements of the newly heritage designated home located on the original lot to the south of the proposed home. The Advisory Design Panel reviewed the application on March 7 and then again on April 3, specifically noting that the overall design and appearance of the home fits within the neighborhood. But they did offer a number of suggestions to improve the home, including the exterior siding layout and materials, the lighting and the skirting boards. Those recommendations were incorporated into the current design. Staff have also reviewed the application and suggest the proposed siting and design fits with the character of the area. This is a neighborhood with a mix of architectural styles and many mature trees. The home is sited in keeping with the covenant that's also registered to the property, which protects the numerous trees on the site. And the existing driveway location will be retained, which further minimizes disruption of the trees.
Thank you, Ms. Jensen. So are there any questions for staff from the committee? Okay, is, I can see the applicant there. You may not, oh, okay. We'll just let the committee ask questions to the applicant if that's first, okay? So can I ask if the committee has any questions to the applicant? Okay, so yes, that's a yes, so I'm going to ask the applicant to come to the table. Put your name and municipality on the sheet there and then I'll turn to Counselor Zelka and he has a question for you.
Thank you so much, Chair. This might be more for staff, at least originally. Sorry, I should have put my hand up sooner. With respect to the infill residential development permit area, now I missed a couple of meetings in the last year, but this is the first time I've seen it used. I was wondering if staff could explain a little bit more about this rather innovative part of our official community plan and how it's different than the other development permit areas for established neighborhoods such as this.
This is actually the second one that council has seen. The first one was with the OCP amendment and rezoning for the properties over on Yale Street. This development permit really, it covers the entire community and it kicks in anytime there's a rezoning application to incorporate single-family homes within the area. So it would be looking specifically at the form and character of those homes. Most development permits are around environmental situations or multifamily or commercial within the community, so this is really under the legislation. This is the one that we have that looks at single-family.
So through this development permit area, is this where we're allowed to modify things like setbacks and side things and height and those various aspects from the zoning itself? Or, because I imagine, or will there be a separate zoning variance come forward with respect to this property?
There are no variances with respect to this development.
Oh, okay, I just wanted to confirm because I wasn't sure on the south of the property whether there was a variance needed for the distance to the property line.
No variance.
Oh, okay, excellent, thank you.
So are there any questions to the applicant? An unnecessary trip to the table, perhaps. But I'm going to, you can probably go back. We might bring you back depending on if there's any questions from the, thank you, nice to see you. So I'll go to the community if there's anybody who'd like to speak to the application, okay?
James Sotanam again. Through your chair, I have a late submission if I could circulate. I have seven copies, so I don't know, the seventh should go to Ms. Jensen or Ms. Jones? Or Mr. Jones? First of all, I've been following this application for a few years right now. I think it's fantastic. I think it should go to council. The owners, if you remember, this property was designated as heritage, Plan A, which is fantastic. I do, though, have a concern, and this is, I'd like to read my comments first and then I'm going to go through the questions. And these are my comments, my personal perception. It doesn't seem appropriate to talk about IRDPA at this point. Oak Bay still does not, does not have a residential infill strategy in place. It actually contracted one and put it on hold. Oak Bay is still gradually regulating our OCP. Good practice and compliance with Bylaw 4653. Land use procedure and fee bylaws indicate that charging a building permit instead from the property located at 1605 York Place would have been ideal. This is not a technicality and it is a matter of consistency and precedent. I do feel that, to me, and I've been following quite a few of the applications, infill residential development permit, and I understand what Ms. Jensen has just said, it is a way that the OCP found to encourage density, affordability, access to housing options, including all sorts of options, including secondary suites, including infill, which by the way, it's not the case of this property. It's a beautiful property. York Place is a dream place. Has nothing to do with infill, has nothing to do affordability, has nothing to do with access to property. So again, I'm a huge advocate for a building permit. So the way this should have been treated is through a building permit. If you go through the Bylaw 4653, this will confirm what I'm talking about. Question. Which bylaw could I find the fee schedule that guided staff to charge the IRDPA for this property located at 1605 York Place? I may be wrong, I couldn't find it. Number two, how much was charged from the homeowner to issue an IRDPA? I couldn't find it.
Sorry, I just, I'll let staff respond to your comments?
Yeah, I don't want to take anybody by surprise. If it's not possible to answer now, maybe some other time. It's just that I couldn't find it.
Through the chair, so the land use procedures by law sets out all the fees that are charged through the planning department. So that covers OCP amendments, rezoning fees, heritage alteration permits and so on. So for a development permit application, and that's any of the development permits that are contained within the community plan, there's a $1,000 application for to process that.
I found it, development permit, but not I, but not infill, I didn't find infill, but I found development permit, including the form.
That's correct. So the development permit fee is applicable to any kind of development permit that's in the OCP. So that would be environmental, multifamily, commercial, or the intensive residential.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jensen, for the clarification. Thank you, Mr. Sultan. Is there anybody else from the, from the community that'd like to speak to the application? It looks like that's, there is not anybody else. So let's see if we can, is there any?
Moves of recommendation.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, we got a mover and a secondary. Is there any further discussion? Counselor Zelka?
Thank you very much, unless one.
Oh, sorry, okay, Counselor Murdock, you made the motion, I guess. Who made the motion? Okay, go ahead, Counselor Murdock.
No, it's fine. I actually just had another question that, I'm not sure if it's answerable or not. I mean, this is within the area of the, considered for the heritage conservation area. It's, there's no process attached to that right now. It was part of a heritage revitalization agreement. This is part of that process going through. I just, I thought I should just ask the question, is there anything here that we're missing in terms of process? It's not a heritage building, obviously it's a new building. There's nothing else here that we have to do correct at this point. This is, or any recommendations here in terms of process to improve this given the location within the proposed heritage conservation area?
No, this really is the culmination of the process that council has seen today. There are no other steps.
Thank you, Ms. Jensen, Counselor Zelka.
Thank you so much, Chair. A similar question relating to the HCA and its relationship to this property. I understand, just to clarify, this process is related to the heritage revitalization agreement on the property, the adjacent property. It's related to that one. So I guess falling out of that then would be my final question, which is the infill residential development permit area allows council to have form and character controls over single-family homes and also to respect and integrate the neighborhood character and streetscapes, which I understand is one of the objectives also of an HCA. So could staff help me understand, what is the difference between an HCA and this development permit area?
Well, the heritage conservation area again would also be set in the official community plan similar to a development permit area. So in that respect, they're very similar creatures. Heritage conservation area would, again, would be focusing specifically on the heritage component of the site. So for this one specifically, what that looks like will depend on the final recommendations coming out of the working group.
Great. And I guess, I guess coincidentally, because it's in such a heritage area, to be, to respect and integrate the neighborhood character and streetscapes of a heritage area, then obviously the new house has to be heritage, which I guess if it was an HCA, it wouldn't quite be quite like that, I imagine, for a new HCA. Unless Counselor Murdock has something to educate me about.
Through your chair, so the Heritage Conservation Area Working Group has not yet determined the rules or the guidelines, or it's not rules, but the guidelines for the area. But I would say what we've seen so far is that the area has a lot of heritage value, but it's also got a real mixed use. It's got buildings, everything from very, very early 21st century into 21st century already existing. And the intent is generally not to be totally prescriptive in terms of that design aspect. aspect. So it can be, it can set design guidelines in any way, shape, or form, but it's, given the heterogeneous nature of this particular heritage conservation area, it's unlikely that it'll be terribly prescriptive in terms of the design piece. It just captures so many different eras of, of building. So that's part of the difficulty is coming up with good design guidelines is to reflect the, the character-defining elements that are identified in the statement of significance and apply those in some way to, to design guidelines. But it's typically not, unless it's a place that's very homogeneous, like a Lunenburg or something like that where there's very clear design patterns, it's probably not too likely to be very, very hyper-specific in terms of the design. So this, I would say, based on that, that the, I mean, this is a fairly traditional design of a house, so it wouldn't call into question anyway. But it would not, at this point, I mean, that's up to the working group to decide and for council to approve, to determine what those design guidelines are.
If I may, may I ask one final question, please? That fell out of this. What is the criteria for applying, I guess in some ways staff would, would probably decide to apply an infill residential development permit area on a property? What is the criteria that actually says, oh, we have to put a D P on that? Because established neighborhoods are everywhere.
Through you Chair, so at the beginning of each development permit section of the O C P, there are two sections relating to the justification around where a D P is required and then the objectives. And in that area, it does speak to any time a, a site is rezoned, that's going to result in additional single-family homes, that development permit area would kick in.
So it has to go through a rezoning and it has to go with some sort of increase or intensification of the residential aspect?
Correct.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. So if there's no further discussion, we have a motion on the table. I'm going to call the question. All in favor? Opposed? None opposed? Thank you very much. So, so we've already said, you know, at the beginning that council will consider this at the April 23rd meeting. So thank you very much for coming. And on to the final land use application. This is a development variance permit application for 1248 Houlet Place to construct in addition to the existing single-family dwelling. Variances are requested for building height and occupiable height requirements. The existing home has legal non-conforming status for these heights. And as we've said before, if the committee determines it's ready to proceed to council, notification will be given following this meeting and it will be finally considered at council on May 14th, 2018. So with that, I'm going to turn to planning and ask for an overview of the application.
So this development variance permit application is to allow for a two-story addition at the rear of the existing home. The existing home was constructed in 1913, currently has an occupiable floor area height that's greater than what is permitted by the zoning bylaw. As the Chair mentioned, that is a legal non-conforming status. To construct the addition with a level floor between the existing and the new construction also requires a variance to the occupiable height for that addition. The applicant is also seeking a building height variance for the addition only. The two variances would result in increasing the maximum occupiable height from 4.2 to 4.86 meters and the maximum building height from 6.72 meters to 7.15 meters. The variance to the building height is a result of a shallow or pitched roof on the addition, which increases the vertical distance of the wall and brings the building height measurement up. And staff are requesting council to direction.
Thank you Ms. Jensen. Okay, so are there any questions from the committee for staff? Counselor Murdock?
Yeah, thank you. Through you Chair, just, there's not entirely clear on what impact there is on trees. There's no, there's an arborist report that sort of identifies some, some tree impact, but no, no, no specifics in terms of the drawings. Can you explain a little bit about what the impact of trees will be of this?
Certainly, there are two trees that are proposed to be removed, which are immediately adjacent to the addition, so it will impact the trees. There's one Gary Oak and one fir tree.
Okay?
Yeah, thank you very much.
Any other questions to staff? Okay, is the applicant in the audience? Okay. Why don't, could you come up to the table and just, we'll see if the committee has, could you put your name and the municipality you've come from, state your name in the microphone for the video as well? Please, thank you.
Hi, my name's Nicole Parker.
Welcome. Are there any questions from the committee for the applicant? Oh, I guess I should have asked that first, right? So, okay, but I didn't, okay. But just stay put, there may be somebody from the community now that you're here. So let's turn to the community. Is there anybody from the community has any questions about the application? No, okay, well, there you go.
Move approval or recommendation to council?
Second.
Okay, so if there's no further discussion, I'm going to call the question. All in favor? Opposed? None opposed? Thank you very much. Move adjournment?
Second.